Seven thirty-five, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Thursday, September twenty-sixth, meeting of the Situate Planning Board. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing. Accessory dwelling special permit for seventy-five Moreland Road. The applicant are John and Catherine McNamara. We have a letter from the applicant asking us to continue this public hearing until...
January twenty-third.
Till January twenty-third at...
Seven thirty.
At seven thirty. The reason is additional time is needed to seek the zoning board of appeals approval for the proposed increase in gross floor area of the primary building. So, I guess they went and they talked to Neil. Neil sat there and said if you're gonna make the bigger, the building bigger, you'll do it through the ZBA. So I need a motion to continue the hearing until January twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, seven thirty.
So moved.
You probably don't need this.
I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
They are continued. The, just in case you weren't aware of it, the meeting at, the public hearing at eight-thirty for three oh five countryway will also be continued. But because it's a public, posted public hearing, we have to wait till eight-thirty to make that continuation.
Okay.
That's why the meeting will be over at eight-thirty-five. Which brings us to old business, new business, correspondence, administrative items, and updates. It's talk that the last meeting Laura was gonna go through and talk to about goals and objectives. I think we have a handout on that.
This is preliminary. This is a first step that Tricia likes us to take in putting our budget together for the year, is to put some goals together and some objectives to carry out those goals. So, um, so we have a couple of, of very general goals and, um, you know, some different action pieces to carry those out. The first one is, is pretty much everything we do here, um, you know, everything that I do with the board, and that is to make sure that all the regulations that we have that apply to development are applied and understood. There are different audiences for those. There are the developers, the homeowners, and then town officials. But everyone really needs to understand how these things work, and, you know, they're, of course, the same for everybody. So, um, the different actions there are to work with the IT department and other town departments on implementing some new permitting software. That's something that's in the works. Um, the IT director got that funded last year, so that's, you know, definitely gonna be happening. But there will be some, you know, coordination that has to happen, and we've all gotta figure out how building is going to get the planning board conditions, and, you know, are there things like form letters we could get in there to remind people about, you know, just generally that there are things they need to do, um, you know, to kind of, um, really impress on people that they're expected to do these things and not just, you know, look at them on a piece of paper and say, isn't that nice? So, th- that was the first objective. Uh, the next one is to continue these meetings that we've been having, which are these, um, is this development review team where every two weeks I coordinate these meetings with building, conservation, health, uh, the facilities manager, and the DPW. And we discuss development that's ongoing and who's, who's got what role, who's responsible for what, is, if there's a problem, who's gonna sort it out, um, who does it belong to, that type of thing. And then finally, just continuing our fairly good relationship with the building department to do things like, um, help them with letters. We're trying to move towards sign off on the building permits. That may still be a little way away, but even though there's some resistance to our doing that, we want to, um, try to help them and try to, um, kind of work towards a relationship where we'd be a little bit more involved with the whole building permit process. The way these goals work is if you have too many goals, it, it doesn't really work so well because, you know, you've got this huge, long list of things that you really can't ever carry out. Um, so this may look a little bit on the, on the spare side, um, but this is just a beginning, so if there are things that you all are thinking about, um, you know, I'd love to hear back what they, what they would be. Doesn't have to be right now, if you wanna think about some of these things, and, um, if you wanna call me or email, um, you, however you wanna communicate is, is great. So moving on to the, the next one, um, we are continuing to run this elevation grant program, and a lot of that has to do with distributing information about the grants to people and, um, maintaining information on the website, and then overseeing the whole permitting and construction when these houses are elevated. What happened, actually, I think it was since when I first wrote this, and now, this year we are having a boom year for these elevation grants, and there are sixteen grants where usually we have, like, two. So, they're gonna consume quite a bit of time, and what I'm trying to do is to get some person who would be hired through the admin money on the grant, who would be the day-to-day contact for people with these, with these home elevations, so that, you know, I could continue to do planning and the other things that I'm really supposed to be doing. So, um, I'm writing that into the grant, and hopefully, you know, we can find a way to make the funding process work. It's a little bit tricky because the person has to do the work first, and then the funds get reimbursed to the town. So, we may even have to have a town meeting article to set up some funds for this person, and then have it, you know, paid back, um, or have a, you know, revolving account, or something like that. So, anyhow, we're also giving some money to, to the building department through this that will hopefully help them either get additional money for the help that they really need, which is more than just this, but at least it's a way of them getting something back for all the additional work that, that they have to do. And, um, it does bring in, you know, this one, because there's so many of these grants, it's gonna be over two million dollars in federal money that's coming in to the builders and the contractors and the engineers and everyone who's involved. So, you know, that's kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Um, the, the third one here is just to continue the economic development work. So, um, the EDC right now is working on their market study. They got the funding for it, you know, after, you know, maybe a couple tries, they, they did get it, and they're doing that right now. In fact, um, if, um, Stephen, you're the liaison. You were at the, the last meeting.
No, I missed the last meeting.
Oh, you weren't, okay. Um, the meetings are lively, there are a pretty engaged group of people, and I think, um, you know, any, anybody who's interested, you know, would be great, you know, if you can, you know, come to some of the, their meetings. But they are working on the study, and hopefully it will identify some of the sectors in Situate where we can grow, and also locations, whether it's to have different zoning in the, the business districts that we have now, or to identify locations on three A. So, um, so that's, you know, one of these items, and then, um, the second item is something that, um, should be, you know, something not too difficult to do, but just to prepare some type of a fact sheet for people establishing a new business in Situate. And I think that would have to include information about a variety of different parts of town hall, like there's the, the licensing aspect, there's the, um, you know, getting your business, you know, getting your incorporation together and that type of thing, um, getting permits. I mean, there are really several different pieces of that that would have to come together in this, but I think it could be helpful to the people that we're trying to encourage to, you know, start businesses in Situate. You know, at least they wouldn't be quite so lost when they get to town hall. So, those are just my initial ideas. You know, I, this is your budget, too, so, um, you know, more your budget, so, um, any thoughts you have about, um, things we can and should be doing? I know, you know, Bob has talked to me a little bit about, um, GIS, and that's a little bit, um, tough because it's really all under the IT department.
I see, yep.
And I think that happens in a lot of towns. It kind of goes off and has a life of its own, but we're trying to stay connected with that, at least.
Are, are there any grants that address themselves to that specifically?
I don't think so.
No?
No, I think, you know, if they're, I mean, possibly if we did something regionally with maybe Cohasset or Norwell, um, Marsfield already has, I think they have some kind of a system, but possibly if we did something regionally, we might be able to get some money for it. I think, actually, he has some money, so I don't think it's, I'm not sure if money is the main issue, it may be more time.
Okay. I mean, it can be a pretty useful tool if it's got the information, you know, layers that, that really make it a robust situation, and you can access them easily enough.
Yeah.
You know, wetlands, contours, all sorts of things.
Do you know, DPW has anything? I know in, in the water and wastewater industry, there's a push-on for asset management, so they actually have firms that will come out and, and, you know, map your sewer lines and map your water lines, and, and that all the information obviously has to go somewhere. I don't know if it's GIS system, I would guess that it is as far as elevations and stuff like that, so there might be a basic framework of town out there with the DPW. Like I said, I know there's, there's a requirement that, that all the assets have to be, you know, accounted for, and, uh, it's basically, um, like we're dealing with now with the age of some of the water pipes. They're saying, how old are they, you know, let's get a plan in place to update that stuff. So there, I think there might be some GIS information out there, at least on the, on the utility side with the DPW.
I know they have been getting, you know, the water lines and, I think, sewer, possibly drainage. I think they're getting some of those things mapped.
Yeah.
In fact, the water supervisor was talking to me the other day about, um, you know, they're doing a big water plan in connection with all of this, you know, infrastructure that they've gotta repair, and they are looking for, um, they borrowed, um, actually, I should tell Karen this, too. They borrowed our CDs of all the new plans. Um, they, they are gonna, uh, update the layer that Mass GIS has, they have a, a layer of all the parcels. The thing that Mass GIS doesn't have is all the buildings.
Okay.
And that's what we really need updated. So, you know, I mean, I've, I've found the people that do that kind of work, it's, I think it's affordable, it's just kind of working through the system and getting it a priority and, um, you know, but, yeah, hopefully, hopefully we'll get there. So...
What's the, you said the new permitting's offer, something you're working on, what, what does that entail?
There's, um, there's some software that the building department has now where it'll issue a building permit kind of electronically. It has the, um, the names of a lot of the contractors are, you know, their drop-down menus and, um, and that kind of thing. So, that was one, one piece, and then I think the other things that this is going to add on to that would be some type of a, um, check-off, like by conservation, that, okay, you know, it's been reviewed, it, it has to have a notice of intent, it has a notice of intent, you know, orders of condition, it doesn't have them, um, you know, whatever.
So this isn't integrated, I mean, like, everybody can do that from their own terminal?
I believe so.
Computer?
Yeah, I believe so. Um, you know, that we all kind of share the same information.
So it's sort of workflow management software, then? That's what it's...
Yeah.
Don't they have, it's a single, single terminal they have within Neil's office?
Yeah, I think this is gonna be something different from that, because, you know, we're buying something new. And, um, I believe it's gonna be so, you know, more departments can sign off, and also that, for instance, when we, you know, when the planning board approves a special permit, that special permit would get attached to a particular parcel, at least, you know, it's, it's hard sometimes, um, to tell when people come in and they kind of give a quick overview, and the whole thing lasts a half hour, and they're going through their whole spiel, um, exactly what you're getting, and that wasn't, um, you know, that was decided, again, by the IT department. But, um, I believe it's supposed to work with a lot more, like, coordination between the different departments.
Mm-hmm.
And to make it possible to have that happen online, so you can see it and you can track, you know, somebody approves something, they've got the date, you know, that type of thing, and it, it's all much more automatic and much easier. So...
Is that tied into the, to any registry, registry records or anything like that? Is there a connection to, to the registry at all?
Uh, I don't think so. No. Anyway, maybe we can bring this back next week, and if people have more, next meeting, and if people have more ideas, we can, you know, just get those woven into it.
When, when does the EDC, and I should know, but I don't, but when do they expect to have their...
Right in my mind.
...market study out and your recommendations?
I think it's gonna be by the end of the year.
Really?
Yeah, like, November, December.
It's almost next month?
Yeah, well...
Sneaking up on it.
It's in theory.
Okay, anything else?
Who wants to, uh, do in the right...
I would move that we approve the minutes for August eighth, two thousand thirteen, and August twenty-second, two thousand thirteen.
Same as, and you sent out his email.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you need to sign them?
Richard signed them, but I can, I can just date them and get them online, and then have Richard sign them next time, now that, I mean, you guys have approved them.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't wanna take Richard's responsibility away from him, I just wanna make sure that they're signed.
Also need to be, uh, signed by someone whose signature we can read. There's no accounting today?
Uh, no, there's accounting.
There's always accounting.
Okay. We do these one at a time or as a group?
I think you can do them as a group.
However, whoever you feel creative.
I'll be fine.
I don't wanna stifle your, this creativity here.
Whatever is gonna take thirty-five minutes.
I, uh, I can talk for a long time if need be, I'm sure.
We can adjourn and allow you to...
Confiscate at some length. Um, I would propose that we approve the following to be paid. Uh, item number one is a purchase order to, issued by Weston Graphics, forty-five Industrial Park, et cetera, for twenty-five zoning maps at a dollar fifty each, uh, in the amount of thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item number two is, uh, four hundred and forty dollars to be paid to Quick Copy Printing in return for printing fifty bound copies of the zoning bylaw with revisions through four-ten-thirteen, as approved by the Attorney General. And number three is, uh, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents to be paid to Beals and Thomas for construction oversight for Deere Common Flexible Open Space, dated August two thousand thirteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
How many houses is Deere Common?
Fifteen, I believe.
For some reason I had fourteen in my mind, and, and, is it fourteen in an existing one?
Yeah.
It makes me feel better.
As long as Bill's happy. We're happy.
Yeah.
And you have very low standards. I'm just a happy camper all the time.
I'm borrowing your pen, I don't wanna sign it in red.
Another question for you. Remember we signed on to a study that was gonna be done on three A at Cohasset, the light?
Oh, yeah.
We wanted to look at our little traffic light and that. I know that, I think there was a meeting, and I think the meeting was postponed, but I don't know whether there was a subsequent meeting?
There was a meeting, I think it was the first week in September.
Okay.
And they distributed their, their draft findings, and, um, you know, we have one copy of this, but, you know...
You want the data to leave our little light alone?
Um, I think their, their, um, conclusion was that we were kind of borderline about meeting the, um, the warrants for getting the traffic light.
We're talking about, they, they were doing a study on three A where shaws are, which is a pretty dan, it's surprisingly dangerous intersection, in terms of number of accidents are there. We'd ask them, I remember, I think you remember, we wrote a letter, they were, we chipped onto a study, our, yeah, Shaw's.
Up on where Fiori's?
Yeah, up on three A.
Yeah.
Well, it goes all the way up to the MBTA, um...
Yeah, but it's going all the way up, but I'm just sitting there saying, but it was gonna go down to the, to the, to the Cohasset line, and what we did is we asked them if they would can, look at it at our intersection on Henry Turner Bailey.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, on a good day, a loud intersection.
That's a terrible intersection there.
Really bad.
I think what they came up with is that they wanna, like, do some redesign of that intersection without necessarily getting a light there, because the light is, is very tightly controlled by Mass DOT. But it looks like they might be able to do something with the turning lane and get it, like, aligned better, so it doesn't look like cars are coming right at you when you're trying to turn.
Because I've been coming out ready to make a right turn headed into Cohasset, and I've had people that have come down off three A, basically come down my lane, right, and literally just come between me and the island on my side of the road.
Oh, wow, okay.
Oh.
Oh, that's never happened.
That's scary.
Seven to me, boys.
It's a confusing intersection, in a way that it's...
Very poorly done.
And if you're coming north...
And there's a lot of turning traffic there.
Northbound on it, you've, you've got a, a really, a really sharp turn, then you've got another smaller turn, otherwise it's, you're in trouble.
Yeah, and if you're trying to take, uh, you're on Henry Turner and trying to go south on three A...
That's dangerous.
It's very dangerous, and if someone's in that position and blocking you, if they're in an SUV and you're on a smaller car, uh, you can't even take a right-hand turn, 'cause you can't see what's coming. There's no way.
I think the safest component that exists is the people that's avoid it. They either go up to the blinking light above it, right, or they go down countryway.
Yep.
By not using it, probably makes it safer.
That's probably why the warrant isn't met for a, a traffic...
Yeah, they actually talked about that.
We need to have more people use it, then we'll get a light.
Yeah. From there, as soon as you see what they do for, assuming that the fire station goes in, you know, public safety building goes in.
Yeah, that'll have to be a full, full light there, at, uh, round...
Don't they have to put a light in adjacent to a fire?
They have to control the lights, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's over and above whatever happens with traffic signals, I'm sure. Yeah.
We can, um, tell people that, that zoning change for the commercial district, to bring that into that village business overlay district with a mixed use and a higher density, that looks like we're gonna be getting, you know, something real on that.
Real.
And they really wanna do it for fall town meeting, which I think is, uh, it's a little tight, but it probably can be done.
But it's a citizens' article.
Yeah. Yeah, which means that, you know, you could, you could support it, you could kind of be neutral on it, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
And where's the overlay district?
It's right in the Green Bush Business District, so it's, it's on the west side of the train, and this would be more like on the east or the south side of the train, um, on the, the driftway.
Oh, over on the, yeah, okay.
Does it, it wraps down to the KFC, or doesn't it get down that far?
No, it doesn't, doesn't go that far. It kind of stays up where the water treatment plant is, and, you know, that side of countryway.
Wouldn't be unreasonable to take it down and bring it around the, around the island and take care of all those special permits that have been put in here.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking the same thing. Seems to me the more legitimate areas that we put into, other than residential use, the better chance we're gonna have to build our non-residential tax base, which we clearly have gotta have as a goal, especially if we're gonna try and finance all this great new stuff that's coming along.
They're coming in, assuming that they filed a petition, the board of selectmen, or to, to town clerk, then to the board of selectmen, and it gets that, what, the twenty-fourth of October, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So that's one we tend to, we look at, which doesn't give us a lot of time if the special town meeting is the fourth?
November fourth, yep.
Hasn't changed yet?
Not yet.
If the Economic Development Commission comes up with zoning recommendations, and that's available to us, say, late November, um, does that give us time enough, presuming we wanna support some or all of them, to get in front of spring town meeting?
Um, yeah, if we kind of, you know, like, um, react, you know, immediately.
Step on the gas.
Step on the gas, hard, yeah.
There are public hearings involved in, in, in all of that process to be gone through.
Yeah. I think what would make sense is, as soon as there's some kind of a draft of that study available, to try to get it out to a broader audience, and, um, you know, see what it says.
Right, 'cause clearly other town departments are gonna wanna weigh in and...
Yeah, I think they, I think they probably are.
Of course.
Yeah. Um, the proponents of that zoning change are, I think they're gonna be meeting with the EDC to see if they, you know, support it, or if they, you know, how they feel about And it sounds, from the way they've been talking, like they probably are gonna support something like that.
Let me, let me go through the rest of the meeting for the rest of this year, because when we can, when what we're continuing, we're gonna make sure that we've got the quorums and the voting, the necessary voting quorums for, so. The next two meetings that, that we've got scheduled are October tenth and October twenty-fourth. Both of those are continuations of three oh five and two fourteen?
Yeah.
And we've got both of those on those nights. Then November fourteenth and, and the tentative meeting for the twenty-sixth of November.
That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Tuesday?
That's the Tuesday, as opposed to the Thursday.
Mm-hmm. I may be gone already by then, I'm not sure.
As soon as you know where, where thou is, or thou, where thou will be. If you feel that is thou, we'd appreciate it.
Whither thou goest, yes.
And then, in December, I have the twelfth and the nineteenth. Hopefully, I think that will cover what we need to cover.
Is that good?
And we'll send out the meeting... And we'll send out the meeting, tentative, the meeting schedule for the first of next year, which puts us back on the standard, the second and the fourth Thursdays of the month.
What's the first one in November, Bill?
The first one, uh, fourteenth.
And then tentative be the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
And that moves it to the Tuesday of the week of Thanksgiving. Do what else do we have, any, anything that we need to do that's pressing?
I think that's about it, I don't know what about, um.
Are you aware of the, the FEMA rally?
Yeah, I'm aware of the FEMA rally, I'm not gonna be around.
Why don't you talk to us about FEMA rally? You're probably more.
I think, is it Saturday?
Saturday at?
Afternoon at Cole Parkway?
I got, I headed it Saturday, nine o'clock down the Cole Parkway, down at the.
Nine in the morning, okay.
That's where I headed it.
Okay, sounds, I, I mean, yeah, sounds probably the right, the right time.
They don't have a whole lot of information on it, other than the fact of where it is and the relevant in the time. Who's putting it on?
The Coastal Coalition's.
Of Central Market.
Of Situate and Marshfield, yeah. I think, I think it's somewhat driven by the Situate one, because, you know, we're having it here. Yeah, I think people probably are pretty aware that this whole, um, effort by Congress and FEMA to change the flood maps has just started this whole, um, you know, strong reaction among people here. And it's not just the map change, it's also this Bigger Waters Act. And the two things together look like they're gonna result in some really massive changes to people's insurance premiums. So, people are nervous and, um, they don't really know exactly, you know, what can be done about it. The town looks like we are gonna be, um, mounting an appeal, like a formal appeal to FEMA. And, um, it's, seems from what I've seen that it's very technical and, um, um, you know, difficult for a, a non-scientist to really completely understand, but I think you can, you know, get some kind of a feeling for, for what it is. And the appeal would be on the basis that there's so many mistakes in the way FEMA did their analysis that the whole thing really doesn't hold up. And different towns and different, um, consultants have succeeded in these appeals before. So, the hope is that, you know, we would be able, it wouldn't just be Situate, but, um, a number of towns on the South Shore that are being affected by this all at the same time. So, the Coastal Coalition has been one of the groups that's been very, um, strong about encouraging the town to appeal and trying to reach as many people as possible to inform them about what's going on. And they're, um, putting a, a meeting together, um, you know, this Saturday, and I'm not sure if they're gonna, um, if Jim Cantwell will be there. Some of the, the different, uh, political people have been very involved with this. We had a meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago where Ed Markey was, was there. And, you know, we all, you know, there were, um, a bunch of officials from Situate, a bunch of officials from Marshfield, and we all just had a chance to kind of explain to him what some of the issues were with these flood maps and how devastating, you know, these insurance increases were gonna be for people. So, um, so, that was good, because a lot of the fight really has to take place at the national level, because that's, you know, where FEMA is. You know, so we're kind of, you know, it's kind of working its way through different, you know, political channels. But the rally could be, you know, like a fun way to spend a morning and, um, you know, kind of productive, meaningful thing if, you know, people wanna do something like that.
In other cases, Laura, if you're familiar enough with them, what happens if an appeal is upheld? Do they just go back and redo their math and, you know, come back to you two or three years later with a slightly different map, but the same kind of deal?
I don't know what happened, um, with the one that the consultant that we're using did, which was in Portland. I don't know how long that took to resolve, but I think it was two thousand and nine on the Cape, um, they appealed, and I don't know who the consultant was, but, um, until now, I think they, they didn't change the maps. I mean, this year they, they went and they, they did do this massive change on the maps down there, but I think they tried to do some, some changes in two thousand and nine that got kicked out.
Who, who did the appeal on the Cape? Was it the Cape Cod Commission or?
Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know who organized it.
That would make sense, though, that it might have been the Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marshall's doing the same thing in terms of their appeal. Like they have some of the same people, I think, working on both of them, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or the state companies, I guess.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think they're hiring, like, more, a few more consultants and doing, you know, doing things a little bit differently. They had more people come into the flood plain. I think they had something like sixteen hundred, and we had something like five hundred.
Do you know whether or not, and I'm just sort of making an assumption here, that the, the new FEMA maps, are they part of the rulemaking authority, um, that we might see the, uh, code of the Federal Register? Um, that, that's how this comes, comes, comes apart, or comes down, down the way?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Exactly how they're, like, codified or.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's part of the CFR is what's happening, and they've got, and they're revamping that through their rulemaking authority that they have that's been delegated by Congress.
That, that could be, I don't know enough about federal regulation and how it, how it happens. I mean, it sounded like, like FEMA has its own kind of authority as an agency to do certain, you know, certain things and regulate certain things, and there's this whole National Flood Insurance Program that they're overseeing, that they're trying to make, um, you know, financially more stable.
That would be my, my next question, is I assume that this flood map process would take the place of the kind of, um, underwriting of the risk they would see in normal liability insurance, you know, for instance, when you were buying homeowners coverage and so forth. So, that's kind of a question that I have, is to how this whole process fits together.
The Waters Act is, is essentially the vehicle that raises people's rates, right? Maps just put more people into the flood zone.
Well, it's, it's really both, because the new people coming in, if they have mortgages, they're gonna have.
Right, no, they need to buy flood insurance, right.
And they never had to pay it.
The rates are then set by the Waters, by the Waters Act.
And then the Waters Act is gonna take away the grandfathering and, um.
It's gonna accelerate everybody to.
Yeah.
Market rates.
So, um, one of the ideas that, um, someone had at the meeting with Markey was, instead of phasing these things in over five years, could they be phased in over ten years? Which sounded like a really practical way to approach it.
I listened to the, the, the meeting that was tipped over Marshall, right, and they were talking about all of the grandfathering, right? And, and it seems like there's like fifteen different variations of, of grandfathering, and how, how it can be continued and how it would not be continued.
Yeah, it's, it's so complex that, um, it's a little scary that they're gonna be, you know, like thousands of independent insurance agents having to deal with it and explain it to people. And then FEMA itself, you know, makes plenty of mistakes, so. We just hope the right information kind of falls out of it somewhere.
Does all of this go through private agencies or, or private insurers, or does some of it go through FEMA? It seems to me that policy that I had was with FEMA directly.
I think the, the private agents handle it for FEMA. I mean, FEMA doesn't have their own agents, but, um, they're the only ones that offer flood insurance.
Okay, so, um, yeah, that's the right situation, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I remember when I, when I had it, I had a, it was a private carrier that had my insurance.
I think you can only get flood insurance if there's absolutely no chance of you ever flooding.
No, I actually collected on mine in ninety-one. Certainly did flood.
I had it in seventy-eight, and there wasn't a thing that happened to my property that allowed me to collect anything on it.
Really?
Yeah. But it's, if, while you're familiar with my house, I got a garage that's significantly lower than, than, than my house.
Right.
So, the water came through, flooded my garage. Just created havoc in the garage.
Sure.
Didn't do anything to the house.
Yeah, a tool shed full of, like, lawn mowers, chainsaws, everything you could possibly think of, that actually got picked up and floated across Musquashka Pond from, from Surfside Road and landed on Weanoway. And we had, we had to get a forklift over there and a flatbed to get it back to where, where it started. But, of course, everything inside it was completely ruined at that point.
Okay, anything else? Twelve minutes before Bob's motion.
Motion to advance the clock.
Why don't we take a fifteen-minute break? Does that work?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for three oh five Country Way. Have a request from the applicant to continue to.
His request for a look at it, and that's the motion for whoever wants.
We have a motion here.
I'll be the Richard Vaxximally today. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and Scenic Road Public Shade Tree Hearing for White Ash Farm Lane at three oh five Country Way until October tenth, two thousand and thirteen, at eight thirty P.M. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the time for action of the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and Scenic Road slash Public Shade Tree Hearing for White Ash Farm Lane Fred's Way at three oh five Country Way until December twenty-three, two thousand and thirteen.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Now we have a motion, Bob's motion?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.